All right, shall we? Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. We will call to order the Belvidere City Council regular meeting of August 19th, 2024. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
All right, if you'll please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we thank you for our country, community, our families, and for our freedoms. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members and for the men and women veterans who have served and sacrificed throughout our nation's history. We pray that you bless them and their families for their service. We thank you for our police and fire paramedic first responders, not only in our community but throughout our country, who bravely serve our citizens and respond no matter what or when. We pray for their well-being and ask that you be with them and their families as they serve our communities. Tonight, we pray for guidance and that you give each of us patience, compassion, understanding, wisdom, strength, and courage as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We pray for these things in Christ's name. Amen. All right, under, excuse me, under public comment, we have some registered. First, we have Rory Peterson. Mr. Peterson, please come up and state your name.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Rory Peterson. I'd like to thank the mayor and the aldermen for considering my interest in the alderman appointment. As was displayed here last week, the council needs to decide its issues based on reason, logic, and fact, not personality. This is not about any one of you, and it's not about me. It's about representing a public trust. An alderman has to be willing to be the adult in the room. For instance, not being willing to green light, suddenly becoming a city overrun with hordes of nuisance UTVs, and then having no political will to put that genie back in the bottle. Someone is naive enough to think that their opinions are not right. For open vigorous debate, they should avoid politics. Hurt feelings have no place here, even if it is the three or four mayor wannabes blaming that rather than helping the mayor move the city forward. An alderman has promoted an incomplete account of a dispute I had 15 years ago with an alderman candidate who I complained was placing election signs in a city stoplight right away. If you have lived in Belvidere for very long, you will remember how politicians have long ignored the laws against using public property for campaign signs. The candidate swore out a complaint against me when I moved his signs from the city property. That charge was heard in the circuit court, which considered the matter and did not sustain his complaint. And now today, the politicians habitually putting signs in our right-of-way are the exception and not the rule. I didn't back down then, and I don't back down now. Take that to the bank or to court. I thank the aldermen voting for my confirmation. To those opposed, I understand you had many other preferences whose strategic concerns may have been more similar to yours. You may even have disliked mine. Mine were, how will we fund and construct retrofitted storm drainage where needed in the older Second Ward neighborhoods? How will the city cover a projected $1 million state grocery tax revenue hole in our budget? What should our city strategy or investment risk be regarding the Stellantis Assembly Plan, how timely today? Where a casino now sucks out millions in regional dollars, compounding the loss of manufacturing job incomes and their taxes? While governments continue to ignore the reality that the market doesn't want EVs? How much, if any, city taxpayer money should be risked on the proposed Rockford Metrotrain? Or do you prefer a bus? Can we keep our water and sewer operations viable and affordable with or without Stellantis ever again building cars here? Should we maintain city contract pricing, bid pricing efforts for residential waste after the 2029 term ends? Can we avoid raising the city's property tax levy, especially not the 17% increase some of you aldermen attempted to force through in 2023? Does the city have any interest in mitigating the potential of tornado casualties at the Greenview Estates and Four Seasons neighborhoods? For the record, however, I was never contacted by an alderman opposed to me for my opinions on these or any other matters. And the vote on confirmation will proceed once again, driven by personality and not issues. The Second Ward and our city deserve better. The personal grudges keep marching right along, while the city's pressing needs will still be waiting for a competent, adult city council.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have Gary Camholtz. Gary? Good evening. Please state your name, please.
Gary Camholtz, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the council. I am here to express my feelings about the appointment for Mr. Rory Peterson. I called several members of the council, and, Mr. Mahal, thank you for returning my call. Mr. Stevens? First thing you told me is that you've been friends with Mr. Peterson for years. Is this vote based on friendship, or is it based on what he's going to do for the city? You also accused me of being in line with Dan Snow. I've never met Dan Snow, other than in this room and you were present. I've never spoken to Dan Snow. I don't appreciate the accusation, along with your major degree of arrogance along with it. As far as council members, Gramkowski, McGee, and Frank, never returned my calls, never heard anything. Why not consider a person who has been on the ballot, who spent their time, energy, and funds to get on the ballot to begin with, instead of just snubbing that person? Or is that another guarantee of the yes/no club by putting Mr. Peterson in? It's already been obvious that that club exists. And, Mr. Peterson, it's nothing personal. All this is about is the way the system is being manipulated by the way votes are taken. Let's appoint somebody that person next week doesn't want the job, they resign. So Mr. Mayor gets to appoint another one. The third time this happens, don't look at me like you got a question, I'll answer.
I'll have a question for you.
Okay.
Keep going.
And the third time it happens, then the mayor gets to appoint somebody that just stays. And obviously, that's going to happen this time. The council's probably going to vote down Mr. Peterson. You will appoint another person. Then that person will take the seat for maybe a week or two. Maybe I'm not explaining it properly, but there's other council members here that know exactly what I'm talking about. And also, a few weeks ago, there was a gentleman in here that referred to you as a Nazi. Well, I couldn't agree more with your decision on that, to talk to him and tell him that you're not a Nazi. I agree, Mr. Mayor, you are not a Nazi. But this is being borderline dictatorship, the way it's been run. You said you had a question?
No, I don't have a question for y'all to comment. Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have Lynette Camholtz. Lynette?
Good evening.
Please state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Lynette Camholtz, and I submitted a letter of interest to you. Did you get that letter, Mr. Mayor?
I did.
Are you going to read that letter to the?
I did read it.
Oh, you read it, are you going to read it tonight to the aldermen or no?
No, we have an appointment tonight, and that wasn't on the agenda as an appointment.
Okay, so then, can I read the letter that I wrote to you?
Uh, yeah, if you like.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lynette Camholtz. I would like to send my letter of interest to be considered.
What was the date on the letter, Lynette?
The letter, August 12th.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm a 1977 graduate of Belvidere High School. I have a 29-year career working with insurance companies as a technical analyst where I investigate fraud. I'm a registered Republican, and I am a member of the Ward Two, and I have been a member for over 30 years. I have volunteered at numerous functions for organizations in the city of Belvidere, including but not limited to local schools, Belvidere Youth Softball, Hometown Christmas, and my local church. I have attended a few council meetings, and I have watched many of televised city council meetings. At one such meeting, an alderman was appointed to fill a vacancy that had previously been on a ballot, which I thought was a protocol to be eligible for that appointment. However, I now discover that that necessarily is not the protocol to be appointed. I desire to be considered for this appointment for alderman in the Second Ward. I have since obtained the package from the city clerk to be put on the ballot for the next election. I love this community, and I would like the opportunity to represent the Second Ward. Thank you for your consideration in this vacancy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, good evening.
Good evening, council and everyone else. Tonight, I'm going to speak about the mayor and the department heads. I've seen many people come before this council, asking Chief Woody, "Chief, we need more police protection over here." Mr. Anderson, "We need weeds pulled out, we need stop signs put up," a whole myriad of things. I've never seen anybody come back and thank anyone. Today, we live in a thankless gimme society. No one says thank, not no one, but practically no one says thank you, and everybody wants the government to give them everything. Well, that's not how it works. I'm nobody speaking to everybody on behalf of somebody that's done great things for Belvidere and continues to do great things, and that's Mayor Morris. I was not a fan of the previous mayor at all. In my opinion, he just occupied the chair for eight years. I moved out here in 2015. I love the community. It didn't take long for me to realize, politics is first, the people are second. Very partisan out here. So I tried by the tested method of eenie-meenie-miney-moe, I selected Mayor Morris. When he was running, there were also two other candidates that were running. I looked at what he was promising, and I thought, boy, this guy's promising a lot. If he can't deliver all of this, he's not going to look too good. Well, the only thing he's yet to deliver is the overpass over Appleton. The rest of the things he talked about, he's already accomplished. He said he wanted to bring new business here. Everybody that runs for mayor says that, or they should say it. And he wanted to bring jobs. Well, the first business he brought here, $28 million truck stop and marijuana store. Plenty of construction jobs and permanent jobs. The next business was General Mills, a million, 300,000-square-foot building. This guy's not talking about bringing candy stores here. He's talking about huge companies that are coming here. The building after that, Walmart. The building after that, Midwest Refrigeration. I drove down 20 in the winter, and if you looked at Walmart, you would have thought it was May. There were construction people everywhere. Granted, we had an easy winter snow-wise, but they worked all through the winter. I was involved in construction for a while, and Thanksgiving was always the date you either got laid off on Thanksgiving or shortly after that, the job shut down. Those jobs went all through the winter. So, Mayor, you're an unconventional guy. I've never watched a meeting or attended a meeting that you didn't single someone out and thank them for something. Where I came from, in Chicago, the mayor referred to the city council as my staff or my administration. No names were ever mentioned. Nobody was ever given credit. He took all the credit. So, continue to do what you've been doing. You're a great mayor, in my estimation, and you're making Rockford, I have Rockford, excuse me, senior moment, Belvidere a desirable place to live. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people that are going to want to move here. Now, as far as your staff, I think every one of them are excellent, excellent. They really conduct themselves well, they all speak well, they give excellent reports. I was here twice before, once to speak against four-wheelers being allowed on the street. I saw it in Chicago. I knew what was going to happen. It's happening, other places that have allowed it. And then the next time I was here was to thank you, both chiefs, and Brent Anderson and his people, for the outstanding job you did on the Apollo roof collapse. Leaders, that's when you find out who a leader is. When something happens that's never happened before, and you see how they react, do they throw their hands up in the air and say, "This never happened. What the heck do we do now?" Or do they take decisive steps and do what's necessary? And I didn't hear anybody on the radio, and I listened to, when a commercial comes on, I switched to a different station. All they were talking about that weekend was the fantastic job that the first responders did for the roof collapse at the theater and yourself. So, people thought you did the right thing. I think you're doing the right thing. I think you have an excellent staff, and they're all doing the right thing. So, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you, Jim. This is very nice of you, I appreciate it, and I know the staff appreciates it, too. I will make a couple of quick comments. One is, I think that it's very difficult to have individuals that have been in this community a long time and that have served a long time. And just because they happen to be my friend shouldn't disqualify anybody. I'm certainly not going to bring an appointment that would be an enemy. I want to have people that I can work with, but I also want to have confidence that they have the thinking skills, they have the ability to understand numbers, finances, and they have a vision of what Belvidere should be or the challenges that Belvidere faces. I think they need to have all of that. And it is not as simple as a political discussion. We may have disagreements on this council, we've had them in the past, and as I said, I'm not, I was appalled, the gentleman who was here before, and he did call me some names that I'm not, I don't think anybody is here. However, I do think that we need to make sure that we have individuals that genuinely care about Belvidere. And the way that it works is that, as the mayor, I bring forth who that individual or he or she may be, based upon a variety of things, based upon, as I said, their experience, their qualifications, and their desire to be, make Belvidere success. This isn't about me, it isn't about you. It's about the people that voted us in to represent a community, and that's what it should be about. I will tell you that any of my appointments have all been individuals that have been Belvidere a long, long time, and that I, of course, I know them. I'm not going to point anybody I don't know. I can imagine the flak that I would get if somebody I don't know turns out to be a failure. That's not part of my job. My job is to do what I believe is the right appointment and the right individual to put into that place. And whether or not they know me, or whether or not somebody thinks that they're a friend of mine, that's besides the point. I think probably most of the aldermen here, and some of the aldermen that are no longer here, since I've been in office, you could say, I could say the same thing. There are individuals that I could bring back that I trust would do the right thing for the city of Belvidere, and under that, under that set of circumstances, they would be disqualified. Well, of course, that isn't right. I don't think anybody here would want to be treated like that. I wouldn't, and I would never do that. So, my nominations, my appointments, are people that I believe will do the very best they can, not for me, not for me, but for the city. And I've also mentioned before that, you know, sometimes the issues seem to be black and white, but there's always a little bit of gray in some of them as well. You know, for instance, with the tax levy. Could we have used the money with the tax levy at the time? Certainly, we could have. We could have taken 17% from the taxpayers, but would that make it right? I mean, you can pigeonhole money, but that doesn't mean taxpayers should cough it up. So, I was against that. With the UTV discussion, there were some people in this council that thought that was a great idea. From the very get-go, it alarmed me, it bothered me, it scared me. I was very concerned that they were going to turn them loose on the streets, and then the police, our police department, like the Rockford PD currently, instead of doing neighborhood policing and what have you, they're trying to chase across the fields for individuals that have a right to drive their UTV on our city streets. Besides the fact that you would have to make sure that they're licensed, you would have to make sure that the individuals that are riding them or that have them are not putting loud pipes on it, it was a disaster for quality of life in this community, and I recognized it right away. And I was not about to allow that to ever pass in Belvidere, and thankfully, it didn't. But sometimes, whenever individuals come into the city hall, they may have an idea, and they may think, this is the best thing for the city. It may be, it may be. However, it's my responsibility as the elected, as a mayor elected for the city of Belvidere, to do what I believe if, and believe me, the buck stops here with me. The garbage franchise, there are people that are not happy with the garbage, the fact that we franchised out the garbage. As I'd said before, many other communities, most all, all of the other communities do that. And the reason, the reason they did it, I just had a lady call me today and said she was paying $160 a quarter for the same garbage. Now, she's paying $67.05. If we never try and do anything, if we never try and do the right thing, and if we're always in fear of getting resistance, that it may not be the right thing, we'll never get anywhere. We just might as well not even convene. So, I appreciate, I appreciate Rory Peterson, I appreciate him for putting his name forward. I appreciate what the council does here this evening. I know a lot of the votes that we've had on some of the economic growth that has spurred a huge development and has really probably only nicked, chipped the armor of what is to come. I think that in those circumstances, I believe that we've been able to do that as a council, and I certainly appreciate it. It's not for my benefit, but it, only my benefit, but as a citizen here in Belvidere and as everybody else that's a citizen here, in this room, council included, yeah, it is the right thing to do. So, it, you know, everything isn't black and white, and there isn't always like cloak and dagger or skeleton in every closet. I would hope, I think, that Rory Peterson had identified a lot of the major concerns that we are facing now. And I've known him a long time. Do we agree on everything? No, we haven't agreed on everything. We have not. But I do think the big picture items that are much more important than this, I think that he's got his, I think that he fully understands them, not only because he was a two-term mayor here, because he's always been a Belvidere resident, born and raised here. So, anybody that comes here that wants to help the city, if it helps me, it doesn't disqualify them, it shouldn't disqualify them, of course not. They don't work for me. You don't work for me, you work for the citizens, you work for your constituents, you work for your neighbors, and you work for the businesses here in Belvidere. So, I think sometimes, whenever it's election season and things get a little bit, things seem to get a little bit hectic, everybody starts to feel that they want to make a change or whatever. That's how elections, and that's how the process works, and I'm glad it works, and everybody can do that. But in the case of Mr. Peterson, I was surprised that nobody had any questions for him, and that nobody called him. Nobody called him and said, "Well, what about this? What about this? What about this? What about this?" Nobody called and asked him one question, nobody. But yet, I will tell you what, he was down at Perry School in Ward Two. Whenever Perry School had talked about closing Perry School, I never asked Rory Peterson to come. He come down there to Perry School at that meeting, at the meetings that they had, because he was an alumni of Perry School, and he'd lived on Perry Street growing up. So, he cared about what the neighborhood, what was, how the neighborhood school closure was going to affect not only the neighborhood, the parents, the children, but also the city of Belvidere. So, a lot of people don't know that, but I did, I saw him there. of Belvidere. So, a lot of people don't know that, but I did. I saw him there. And, you know, there wasn't a lot of other council members that were there. So, anyhow, I do want to make sure that we have a good understanding that this isn't about me. This is about what the vision of Belvidere is going to look like, and it's not about any selfishness or self-service whatsoever. So, thank you for your time. Moving on, we have item four, the approval of the minutes. We have item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of August 5, 2024, as presented. If I could have a motion to their approval, please. Motion by Alderwoman Frank. Thank you. Second by Alderman Flurry. Thank you both. Any questions, any concerns, any corrections on the minutes that you have in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes, of the motion to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. Motion passed. Thank you. And under public hearing, we have none. We have special messages and proclamations. I had a proclamation in here this evening on the agenda for Constitution Week. I think we all think, I would hope we all agree that the Constitution is, in its written form, very, very vital to our independence, to our republic, to our democracy. However, that individual is not here this evening, correct? So, do I need a motion to table that? Because we have time to do that, and she may want to come back. Shall we do that? Is there anybody, we'll carry that over to the agenda. All right. All right. Thank you. And we have item B, Ida Public Library and Brenda Obalade. Oh, thank you, Brenda. Come on up. I didn't butcher it, at least, did I?
No, you got it right on the first try.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Brenda Obalade. I am the president of the Ida Public Library Board. Just to give a brief introduction to myself, I moved up to Belvidere in 2012 when I got a job as a school psychologist in Rockford Public Schools. And since coming up here, I've had four kids who I now homeschool. And as a homeschool family, we've spent a lot of time at the library. So, that is how I got involved over there, and I'm excited to be getting to help them in this new capacity. I was elected as the president of the board at the last meeting. So, our library director, Mindy, sent me with some notes to share with how things have been going at the library here. First of all, it has been the summer reading program. They had a record number of 750 kits that were sent out at the start of summer to families in town here, and 400 of those were returned. So, kids participated in the program with completing the reading, and we had a huge amount of involvement. This was a 50% increase from last year. We are now working on the fall program planning, and it will be ready soon. So, there will be lots of programs to be seeing out on the website, and flyers will be available in the library in a couple of weeks. This fall, we'll be following the U.S. Forest Service Smokey the Bear Reading Challenge. Smokey is 80 years old this year, and we'll be having several fun activities, including an indoor campout and a family fire safety event with the Belvidere Fire Department. We also have a book sale coming up November 6 through the 9. That'll be hosted by the Friends. The 6th is just for Friends members. If you're not a Friends member, you can join at any time. It's a $5 fee. You can join at, the library has flyers and collect that anytime. We have had some issues going on with the building. It's an old building. I'm sure that this is something that comes up frequently here. We're working on repairing a roof leak and some downspouts, and the insurance will not cover these repairs. The sump pump floats have been repaired, so all should be quiet, but there was a loud grinding sound coming from the metal box near the Madison Street stairs. It was an alarm for the sump pumps, and it meant one or both were malfunctioning, but they should be okay for a while now. We are needing to resurface and restripe the parking lot. BellRock will be doing this for us as soon as the potholes are filled in. And then, we are still needing to find somebody to install four ceiling fans in the nonfiction side. We've been having issues with some ventilation and humidity. We've had a couple of quotes, but they fell through, so we're still working on that. The Bookmobile has also had a few expenses come up. We had two AC units replaced, and the radiator for the generator went out, so that cost a total of $6,000. But we are up and running, and the Bookmobile will be visiting most of the schools. Yes, most. I was trying to remember if it was most or all, wanted to make sure I said that right, during the fall. We have had a staff change. Liberty Thornton is our new teen and young adult service assistant. So, she'll be coordinating the teen programs going forward, selecting materials to order for the young adult section, set displays, and participate in the teen outreach. And then also upcoming at the library, the RVC citizenship classes, they started, I guess this isn't so much upcoming as just recent, they started August 12, and they're going to be every Monday for 10 weeks. One participant has already scheduled her citizenship exam, and we've agreed to continue another 10 weeks through the winter. And then, finally, this is the part I'm most excited about. We have started our strategic planning. We are having a community forum tomorrow evening and again on Saturday, the 24th at 11:00 a.m. I have some flyers if anybody is interested. We are doing this as a hybrid meeting, so people can come in person or participate via Zoom, but we're trying to get some ideas from, some feedback from the community about how our library needs to change and grow over the next five years. So, we're starting with a community forum, and then we'll be distributing surveys to try to get an idea of how we can best serve this community.
Is there any questions for Brenda, if anybody has any? I'm sure she could answer them. Anybody? All right. Well, thank you, Brenda Obalade. I appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Of course.
Yeah, one of those. Thank you.
Brenda, if you want to, just leave, if somebody wants one, certainly, just whatever you have, leave them by Brent, Mr. Anderson there, and I'll snare one on the way through as well. Thank you very much. Next, we have item C is growth dimensions. I don't believe Pam is with us here this evening. She did leave, there is on your desk, a report regarding some of the information that she had wanted to share with you. Remember, for those of you that signed up, Thursday, August 29 is their annual reception, for those of you that signed up, just as a reminder. And I'm sure she'll want to talk about some of this when she comes back the next time. Moving along, item seven, under approval of expenditures, we have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,27,842.8. If I could have a motion to approve them, that would be nice. Motion by Alderwoman Mulhall, second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you, both. Any questions? That is in your packet. Any questions regarding the general and special fund expenditures? If you have, now's the time. Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to go through there. It's pretty high, I thought, but it's probably the norm right now. But I was wondering if the director, finance director could explain a little bit why it's so high.
Ms. Hanson?
So, actually, what I typically do every month, when this, the summary is put together, is I will go through and see if there's anything out of the ordinary that isn't a normal monthly expense and make a note of that, just in case there's any questions. And I said, I went through everything, the payables for this month. Really, the only thing that jumped out was just about $95,000 went from general fund into capital, some of that for the primary clarifiers, which is ARPA funds. As you remember, you approved that the repairs to be paid from ARPA funds. So, anytime we have payables on that, we move the funds from general fund into capital. And that was really the only thing that jumped out at me. Everything else was your pretty standard monthly expenses. But if you have any questions on particular ones, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Ms. Hanson or anybody else? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor for general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,27,842.8 will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. And then, we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $1,234,994.36. If I could have a motion for their approval, please. Motion by Alderwoman Frank. Thank you. And second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you both. Any questions regarding the expenditures that are in your packet for this evening? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed. Thank you. And moving along, item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officer. Please note, for the record, items A through G have been placed on file with the city clerk's office. And item H, I would ask for a motion for the minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning dated, and public works dated August 12 of 2024. Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you. And a second, second by Alderman McGee. Thank you both. Any questions, any corrections, any concerns regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. Motion passed. Thank you. Flipping the page, item A, ordinance 691H is a second reading. That is an ordinance amending section 114-231 and appendix A of the Belvidere Municipal Code to modify water and sewer rates. Ordinance 691H, the water service rate to be charged each user located in the city limits for all water service shall be $1.87 per 100 cubic foot. If I could get a motion to that effect for discussion, please. Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderwoman Frank. Thank you both. Brent, do you want to put that into perspective? I know we've talked about it before, but you want to put that into perspective with dollars and cents on an average, and also you may want to comment on the comparison, please.
Sure, Mayor. On your desk tonight, just happened to, we got the earliest issue of the American Water Works Association Journal, which comes out on a monthly basis. And in there, they had their, their cover story was Water and Sewer Price and Affordability Trends in the United States, 2017 to 2023. A copy of the cover is on your page. And to summarize, they arrived at 6,200 gallons per month for single-family consumption as an average. Up till now, we've been using 6,000. But based on that 6,200 gallons, they found the national average for 2023 was $95.02 for your monthly water and sewer bill. The city of Belvidere is down at the bottom. I placed on there the Belvidere monthly rate for 6,200 gallons of $48.20, and that represents what it would be if you approve of this motion to raise the second raise, second step increase that was proposed. And I guess the other, as it was stated in the memo, this rate increase on the water side would be about $1.20 per month, and on the sewer side, it would, it would relate to a $1.60 per month increase over what's been paid. And if you would go in the packet back on the cash flow statements for the water and sewer fund, what I pay particular attention to on a monthly basis is what our nets are. So, page 104 of that cash flow statement right now, last month, we were in the hole 57,000, and budget-wise, we're projecting to be 291,000 in the hole. And on the sewer side, if you go to page three, projection-wise, we were 80,900 on the negative side for this month. And again, as we project that out, we're looking at it to be 416,000 in the net. So, the two rate increases, the second steps are needed. They were contemplated as part of the budget process. The budget was approved based on the recommendations of the rate increases. And note, on the sanitary side of things, we will need a third rate increase to cover the cost of our 2018 improvement project, low interest loan program improvement project to cover that cost of what that loan payment will be. We do not have that finished paperwork yet, so we don't know what that is. And again, that will be recommended to go in effect on December 1, and we'll take a look at where we are with receipts and stuff, as well as what it is that we owe for that project. And that will determine what that third step recommendation will be, but you'll probably see that in November.
Okay. Questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Brent, not passing this, will, can you talk about the negative ramifications? Will this make us default on our loan or be in danger of defaulting on our loan?
Well, if it's not passed, based on the budget, and again, I'll refer back to the monthly statement. So, if you look on the water for the total water department expenses, you will see that on the net where it says ending cash and investments on the bottom of page one, actual for 2025, and that's a running total. So, right now, we have 215,692 left in our O&M operation and maintenance account to the positive. So, every month that we are in a negative, we're reducing that. So, as the projection shows, we're going to be in the hole 382,000. That means we either have to cut budget items, lay off people or something, because we don't have the money to pay for our O&M expenses. We're not covering what our expenses are. Same thing with the sewer. If you look on the sewer side of the ledger on page three or four, again, right now, we have 303,000 in the bank. What that represents basically is, over time, our O&M budget, we budget a number, and then at the end of the year, we come in and we, hopefully, we usually budget for budget neutral or even a small surplus. And so, over time, we've gotten that much of a positive balance in there. That has, that has helped because that has precluded us from doing rate increases for quite a while. We haven't had a rate increase since, I think, 2011 was probably our last rate increase before we did the step one. But it's got to the point now that we need to, we need to do the rate increases. And again, if you show the projection, what we're showing for the end of the year, we're 416,000 in the red. So, again, without the rate increases, we will have to make big alterations on the budget.
Continue, please.
Thank you. So, with, if just step two, or we have to go all the way to step three with these increases, where will that leave us in the budget? Will it leave us at even or will it leave us with a surplus?
The proposed rate increases for step one, step two would cover the proposed deficit to make it, make us basically an even budget. And as we're required from the state, we can't, we can't use it for any other, the water and sewer rates pay for water and sewer, the water and sewer department expenses. We can't use that for police, fire, any other general fund expense. It's proprietary to water and sewer. So, we can't charge, nor do we want to charge. We don't want to charge our residents any more than we absolutely have to. And we've done an exceptional job, in my opinion, of doing that over a long period of time. And so, the proposed rate increases are what we need, basically, to balance.
Okay, any, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, all those in favor to approve ordinance 692, 691H, excuse me, that being an ordinance amending section 114-231 and appendix A of the Belvidere Municipal Code to modify water and sewer rates accordingly. When their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
No.
Seven in favor?
That passes. Yeah, that's enough to pass. Uh, all right, uh, you know, I do want to, I do want to say this, is we, we have to be real, realistic about our expenses. Uh, Brenda didn't comment about, um, some of the shortfall that we have because we don't have our largest water user online as well. We have an abundance of water and if we don't sell the water though, uh, we can't pass those savings on to the residential consumer and that's just the way it's worked. It has worked good. Uh, there have been some issues, uh, before, whenever we've had Stellantis, Chrysler, Fiat, Benz, whenever one or, uh, all of those have been shut down for retooling or what have you, we have run into it. It's just that it, this has been, this has been for a little bit longer period of time and, uh, we haven't had a rate increase since 2011. Um, realistically, we would never like to have a rate increase, but, uh, we do have a price to, of business, to do business. And, uh, we do have to provide, uh, our residents with water and sewer. And when you compare them, I thought Brent was, uh, I thought that comparison spoke volumes about how well we have done and how well we are doing. And by comparison, in Northern Illinois, we're half, we're, uh, Mr. Anderson, I think you said 90, 95 and we're at 48, uh, some, and some change, 95 and 48. So the rate, uh, the average rate is 95, our rate is 48, we're about half. And, uh, I am proud of, uh, I am proud of Brent and, uh, the staff, uh, for, uh, being able to look to how we're going to be able to make this, uh, how we're going to be able to continue to function without, uh, we're not, we're certainly not gouging anybody. I'll guarantee you that. And we would ne, we, we would never do that, but, uh, so thank you, Brent, uh, Mr. Anderson, I appreciate it. And thank you, council. Uh, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. Could I just ask Brent a quick question?
Sure.
So, um, as far as tier three that will be coming up in December, I don't know how long it's going to take, um, the Walmart distribution or when Stellantis is coming back, but we do have the new Tanner Industries. So with that extra water usage, will we be, be able to maybe forego tier three?
Um, we'll see, well, how it plays out and what, what the projections are for there. Each one of those industries and even Tanner, I, I was quizzing Tanner to see, I was hoping they'd tell me they were going to use a million gallons a day, but unfortunately, with the product they make, they're somewhat limited in capacity. So they're not going to be a real, a, a big user of water. So, um, again, we'll have to play that out. And, um, with these rate increases and hopefully everything that's, the plans for Stellantis pan out and all the employees come back and that usage comes back and all that will do then, we'll, we'll basically, that will allow us to, to extend further before we have to come back for another rate increase.
All righty, thank you. Uh, moving on, we have item 10, new business, uh, motions forwarded, forwarded from committee of the whole building, planning and zoning and public works of, uh, the August 12th, 2024 meeting, motions out of planning, uh, motions out of planning and zoning. Chairman McGee?
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Paul Engelmann to serve as chairperson of the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for a one-year term ending May 2025.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions, uh, any comments, any concerns regarding the appointment of Mr. Paul Engelmann, uh, as chairperson of the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for 2025? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, uh, will, when your name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, Chairman McGee. And moving on to motions of, uh, motions out of public works, uh, Vice Chairman Freeman?
Thank you. B, motion to approve the I dot request for approval of change in plans form in the amount of $15,209 for the Iron Road Realignment Project. This work will be paid for from grant funds.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions, uh, or comments or concerns regarding the motion on the floor, now's the time. Uh, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And, uh, we have motions of, uh, excuse me, motions out of finance and personnel. Chairwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. C, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Rory Peterson as alderperson of second ward to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of alderperson Dan Snow.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there's any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor, now be the time. Alderman Stevens?
Yes, I want to point out, I do know Mayor Rory fairly well. We went to Firefighters Academy in 1985 together and worked on shift together at the fire department for quite a few years. So I was probably spent more time with him and the other guys in the department than I have with my own family because we worked 24 hours straight together. And you learn to re, plot, rely on those guys. I trusted, uh, him that if I got into trouble in a fire or any other situation, he'd be back there to come in and, uh, come after me and save me. I hope he thought the same thing about me, maybe. So I know Rory fairly well. And yes, I do consider him a friend. And, uh, I'm sorry that, uh, Mr. Camp, Mr. Camp Holtz, that I wrangled you in with Mr. Snow. I forgot that you were Marsha Freeman's relative somehow, so I misspoke. Hmm, I'm, I'm sorry about that. I thought you were. So, but you set the tone of the whole thing and that's when I got towards the end, you wouldn't listen. So I got a little snarky. But I do support Rory. I mean, like I said, I've trusted him in the past with, uh, a lot of stuff and I still trust him. And he's a very intelligent individual.
Okay, thank you. Whoops, excuse me. Okay, thank you. I have my mic on, they're going to yell about that. All right, uh, any other comments? Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the, of the motion, will, when their name